The ordinance, they passed the ordinance on me.
Alright, how you doing? How was your trip?
Thank you, man, it was good. It's still good. So it's like, I ain't had no chance to go to sleep. The special meeting of the Prairie View City Council is now in order. And... The time is 3:10 PM. Ms. Cortez, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor David Allen. Councilmember Brian Rowland.
Present.
Councilmember Jonathan Randall.
Here.
Councilmember Kendrick Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Williams. Councilmember Sancho Walts.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. If we'll stand for an invocation, Mr. Johnson, if you would do us the honor, just lead us in a quick prayer, would you mind? I know you go to church, because I seen you.
Yeah, but I don't pray too much.
Okay, good enough. We appreciate it.
Well, Lord, I wanted to turn up today and say a prayer in your name, Father, because you're the one that we have to come to and depend on for our strength, our wisdom, for everything that we did. Everything we did for granted, Lord, but I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come together today. And let this meeting serve as a success. Let this city be a progressive and good city for just to live and work. This prayer, Lord, I pray in your name. Bless our leadership, and please bless me. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And to pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Bless you.
Bless you.
Counselor, or did we have a council member that requested this one? Or was it something with planning and zoning? I forgot. I know we needed to straighten out our understanding of...
Well, I thought this was for everything. We were supposed to have, one, not only planning and zoning here, but also maps so we could like look at what we currently have. The attorney was supposed to be here. We were supposed to go through, this is what we currently have, this is what we need to do, and have the people here helping us walk through, community citizens got to get input. This was our time to do that, but also there were some questions and the changes that we talked about at the last meeting in reference to zoning changes, and this was the opportunity for us to say, like, look at the street. We all look at a map and we look at the streets, so we get familiar, and I thought that's what this was supposed to be.
Well, this, you're right on all counts, but the, I know the updating, I think, of the map that you referenced, we may need to schedule a meeting after that. I know they mentioned there's a professor at the university who's going to assist with it, and they haven't had time to do that part, so I think that's a big part of it. I know the biggest concern we currently actively have is we've got applications, albeit some of them may not be right. The issue is, once they are corrected, because it's easy enough to correct them, what was done, and I think the other portion is for Councilman Wallace's edification. We had Olson and Olson share with us previously. They were the ones that brought up spot zoning to us, if I recall, when mayor on the council at the time. But it was this kind of thing, in other words, doing something in the middle, like picking a spot, when the area was designated for one thing, and you're just going to change the spot instead of the area. And I'm, that's the concern that I have. Like you said, what, I know what we passed for that landowner, but when you speak of a zoning change, even, you know, with the years I was just in the audience, they always changed, at least, again, and this was the city's practice, they changed the zone, not a street or a property, in the zone.
I would, I would, I would say part of that is right, but the part that is not is that it depended on the property, because in each of the examples that we had, the legal description and the property that we identified, it would change. Now, this is the opportunity that I thought we were going to be able to, even if we don't have a new map. We have our old map, which is actually what we should be using. Whatever our current map is, that's the map we should have, and we should be able to like have a table right here, have the map. And I think it may be, I don't know if it's the map that we have next door, and I can go get it, but like, let's talk through, because the mayor is identifying, what he, he is saying spot zoning, but we've talked about this issue two or three times, and we all have, we are all going by the legal description that's on our paper. And so, we want to make sure that here is now where we talk about the application that you said several people have submitted to change the zoning, and we want to make sure we have a solid application, and that's our opportunity for us to look over the application now. And then we, then we say, okay, from the application, they got the map, they got the application. Then we say, okay, what's the process? It says zoning ordinance and procedures. What is our procedures, not based upon our interpretation, but based upon interpretations on their paper? And so, this is what we have, this three hours, I thought, to kind of dig into.
But, but picking up on your point, and I just want us to be clear, it's not the mayor's interpretation. I remember Olson and Olson sharing with the former mayor and the council that this was in essence, at that time, the very definition of spot zoning. So we basically have the previous city attorney and the current city attorney maybe interpreting those laws or what have you. And I think that's where we have to start, because foundationally, we're okay with whatever the law says. It's just that now we're hearing two different versions of the same law. Councilman Randall, I think, like myself, you may have had the understanding, we changed the area at the last time, when this was done, for the lady and Dr. Hawkins?
Yeah, yeah, it was my understanding that we changed the zone, we changed the entire zone, so... I also thought, you know, this meeting was going to be about not only that, but I thought all of the zones in the city in general, so we could try to create a new understanding of what the zoning is all, what the policies and procedures are for getting the zoning changed, getting our current system up to date, but the fact that planning and zoning is out here and the city is in here.
Yes, sir.
Now, I kind of want to, I thought that Planning Zone was going to be here to walk through the process, you know, to, so we could get in-depth, because I want to say, this is the one that I got off the website, that was already there. So I thought they were going to be here do more in-depth, so obviously they're not here, but I do think we should at least take a look at the big maps, so we could try to at least come up with one in accordance and discussion.
Would you hand Ms. Cortez yours? Yes, sir, so she could print a copy of that, because like you say, it's a smaller version of the big one, and we can just kind of follow it. If you could print six of those, Ms. Cortez? Thank you, ma'am.
Mr....
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, he's over at Planning, was he contacted to come to the meeting?
As long as it was, matter of fact, he was at the meeting when this one was set.
But, I mean, we, we had, we made a date in time, but after that, there wasn't another reminder, in a sense.
I can't say what happened through this week. I just got back, literally, a couple of hours ago, from out of country. But what, what we might do, and whether we need the full few hours or something like that, is because we just kind of threw it out there, we knew we needed to meet to further discuss. Maybe what we can do now is really outline what in general we want. We know we need the map updated, and I think a person's been identified, so, but I don't, I mean, I don't know who that person is. I've heard of him a couple of times, I think, Council, you met with him at Planning Zone meeting. But to be able to get with him and say, okay, we need you to update it, that'd be like one of the things we need, because even the map we look at, I don't think it's been updated in seven, eight years or something, and there have been some zoning changes. Yes, sir.
So even if someone was to meet with that professor, where would they get all the up-to-date information to be able to provide help, so that way we could come back?
Oh, we've got several of those changes that we've been pulling up from prior council meetings?
So, is it possible that I could request all of that, so that...
So it's all online. All the prior agendas are on his website, and so, his name is Dequalis Thompson. It's the architect's name, who works in the university. Mr. Brown met with him and myself a few weeks ago, and he was going to begin by going through past agendas to find out, and you have not had very many in the last few years, because I've looked as well. I've been here for almost a full year, and the only ones we have done is the four that we did recently, and then we'll have Mr. Hawkins come back and do his. I believe we did Ms. McCardle, there was the townhomes, Mr. Hawkins, and there might have been one other one.
The other shot.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez, thank you. So those are the only four from the last year that I'm aware of. I did go back and do a quick search of what y'all have done, and some stuff pulled up from 2013, which I thought might be helpful to let the council know what y'all did in the past. And Mayor, I think what some of the confusion might be, I don't know what Olson and Olson rendered, but in the memory I put together the last time is, it sounds like spot zoning when you're picking a spot, and I absolutely understand that, and that is obviously...
Again, and that's just our simple understanding of it, but go ahead.
Well, it's, it's not, it's actually a really good understanding, because you don't want to just be like, oh, we're just picking that spot for no reason whatsoever, okay? And so, if you look at your zoning code, you can only make an amendment for, to correct an error, so if there's something wrong with the map that was not supposed to be there, or to recognize changed or changing conditions or circumstances in a particular locality or area. And that's primarily what the zoning commission found when they made the recommendations to council, because they don't get to change anything, they can only recommend to council, is that this area, and let's take an easy one, for example, Mr. Hawkins, which will be coming to y'all at a later date. He's on Business 290, I believe, correct, is that right, ma'am?
No, he's on Hawkins Street.
Hawkins Street, but is that...
Block off of...
A block off of...
Block off of US 290.
US 290, okay. And so, he wanted to go from, I believe it was, single family to do the thing.
General commercial.
Right.
But see, his, like you say, his...
His was R3, and he wanted to go to GC or vice versa.
Or he had two.
No, his is, his is R1.
R1?
Uh-huh. Because I see from his house.
But what was the difference between, was it GC or R3? Because the difference, well, no, it was GC, because at first it said hotel, and then he switched it to the bed and breakfast, and you could do both.
Mr. Brown switched it.
But see, but see, again, here's, here's where some of that confusion even back then was. I don't know how many years ago, when the council, Councilman Rowland, when y'all made from, pretty much from the Dollar General to the entrance to the university, commercial?
When we adopted this overlay, which would, again, this is probably seven years, that the problem is, once we adopted the overlay, which is the whole GC thing, which again doesn't, you know, doesn't, so when... So just like, for example, the house burned down. They don't, from my understanding, since that's GC, they don't get to put up another house. Is that correct?
Yes. My understanding is...
Can I repeat that again?
So, the, next to the credit union, there was a house.
Okay.
A house that was inappropriately housing multiple people, but then we ain't even going to get into that. Caught on fire.
Okay.
That's a GC.
Okay.
They shouldn't be able to build another single-family residence there, is that correct?
It's a non, you're saying that's a non-conforming house, correct? If it's more than, it should be 50% destroyed, is typically the standard.
Now, now, let me, now, let me ask you this. Does the situation, because it was a fire, does that allow someone? Because I know with, with like a manufactured home, if the area's been changed, that person gets to put in another manufactured home one time.
There are certain circumstances in their manufactured homes where they can replace it with another manufactured home.
But with this house, it's not?
I just have to look and see what, how non-conforming is defined in your particular ordinance.
But, but what I was, what I, the reason I brought that up was, back when the council adopted this zoning overlay change, how far back, because like, right on University Drive in Hawkins, that is general commercial, but right on the back lot of that same block is the property Dr. Hawkins has. But had they defined what was changed then, Dr. Hawkins' property may have already been changed. You see what I'm saying?
No, it didn't automatically get changed. So this is the, this is the example I'll use from Hempstead. I have some property in Hempstead, and my neighbors moved their property to a general commercial. They put in an application. My property, just because my neighbor's property becomes general commercial, my property doesn't automatically become general commercial. Now, they set the precedence, because now if theirs get approved, mine's get approved. And so, my understanding was, so it said Mr. Hawkins' house is over here too. And based upon just generally looking, he's in a GC. Because if I'm looking right here, and so we're saying, or maybe I'm looking wrong here, he's in the R2. So if we're saying, so, so if he's wanting to build a bed and breakfast, let's say, next to his house, a couple hundred yards, he would have to, because his property's R2, is currently zoned whether it's R1 or R2, he has to put in an application, even though we have this, zoned this, because he's coming out of something that's been grandfathered. They don't, you don't get to automatically, that's just, that's part of the issue that Panther Hill and other projects, they don't just, just because it's that area is zoned or changed over, don't mean that property is automatically, because if somebody was living there, like, let's say Ms. Carter. Ms. Dorothy Carter, her property is on, is on, is on general, general commercial. She could live in that house as long as she want, but if she wanted to turn her house into something, she has to put in the application. She can't just go start building the next day and say, oh yeah, my house is general commercial. And that's what I thought the process was, and can you, because this is the process that they had in Hempstead, and... And so, that's part of, the issue is, we, it can be zoned, our maps could say GC, but if someone lived in it prior to, they, they now know that area is, but they still got to put in the application, letting everyone know, saying, hey, I'm moving from residential to GC, and then we have certain codes that they now have to, you know, like move to. That's what I thought the part of the application process was.
But if, if, if you look at the University Drive from US 290, okay, all I see physically, and work with me here, and, you know, because I could be looking at it wrong, but basically, I see the street is what is purple and was changed to general commercial. The actual street, it doesn't define, let's say on the corner of Dr. Hawkins, University and Hawkins Street. It actually doesn't show that particular piece.
So this, I'll tell you the political piece.
But you see what I'm saying?
I'll tell you the political piece on how, what this is.
Okay.
University Drive, that whole thing, overlay, is supposed to be general commercial. Because that is our downtown city of Prairie View, just like on Sixth Street, general commercial. So if you buy a home over there, don't wonder why they have music playing at 12 o'clock, dah 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 dah. Now, I'll tell you, some of the people who was on this committee, and y'all can look it, I mean, y'all know what we talking about. The politics of what has happened is, there are some residential properties that are still R1, because there's some people who still live there. And so, those could have been the people who still served on the committee, those could have been people who've been here a very, very long time. So understanding when we start to change this, that dynamic is at play.
Sure. Sure. But, but now, now, let me pick up on that, because I think we're kind of getting to some of the specifics. If we stay right on University Drive, okay? As you look at it, the only thing that is, the, it's like, as you say, Councilman, it wasn't changed. There's a lot that wasn't changed, per the map. I know, I know what the intention was, and like you said, but see, they could have changed the map, even, for example, where Ms. Carter's house is. It could still be in a GC, and she could still live there forever.
Right.
You see? But on here, the area wasn't changed.
No, 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 the area's changed, so...
It still says R?
No, no, the overlay, you see, the overlay takes up that whole area, which means is, if Ms. Carter...
I'm sorry, is that the black line?
No, the overlay is this whole purple, so you have 290, all this, and then you have Sandra Bland Boulevard, which is the whole area. That's the overlay that's on top of this. That means that if someone who's in R1, who currently lives in a property that's R1, leaves that particular property from R1, they can only move to what is the overlay district, which is supposed to be general commercial. Now, Mr. Marshall Brown, who's on the, who's on the committee, and one of the people who, can you get Mr. Brown a map? Can you confirm what we're saying, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, I thought this meeting was on Friday, and we do have a sophisticated, sophisticated presentation. We're going to have a screen and two different maps that we're working on, it's costing us a lot of money, by the way, I think, but... And so, my understanding was, I kept asking the question if this was going to be on the day or not, or be... And so, the attorney informed me that we had to publicize this. So we did, Ms. Dickey, the correspondence, for the meeting on Friday at 5 o'clock.
So, Mr. Brown, this is not to take to circumvent Planning and zoning meeting.
Oh, okay, I thought that's what, I thought that's...
Your meeting is still at 5:00.
This is a meeting that we put on the agenda, where we wanted planning and zoning, and everyone to come talk about the mapping zoning issue.
That's what I thought the meeting was.
That's today.
Okay, well, that was, that was the question. I had to leave because I had to go take my medication before we all set the date, so I was trying to find out when was the meeting. So the mayor told me to ask Ms. Dickey, and she informed me to ask the attorney, so...
I thought this, this meeting was posted.
This meeting was posted, so it's...
It wasn't, it wasn't posted as of yesterday, when I was sitting down. It wasn't on the door.
It wasn't?
But anyways, so let me try to answer, so let me try to answer your question, I guess, but, but let me, but let me say this, okay. So we are updating the zoning map as part of that, with all the information, and then we have the comprehensive plan, we have a map for that, with all the recommendations that we can show to the council and the mayor, and say, okay, these are the ideas. And all we have to do is to say, okay, take out what you don't want and put in your ideas, your approval like it is, whatever you want to do.
How, and I guess since we don't have it in front of us, how much of a change? Can you talk to, or briefly tell us about how much of a change than what you're proposing to what we have? But also, our problem has not been this map. Our problem is the procedures or the things that go along with the map on how do we either, how do you make a change or how do you not? And so, did, in that present, in the comprehensive thing that y'all put together, do y'all have something that kind of goes with that?
Okay, the, the map supports the comprehensive plan. In fact, the two of them work together, and it's a planning tool, where the city can plan what you plan to do in the future. The utilities and everything should complement the map, and that way, it's more of a organized way of doing something, rather than it's that it has a developer coming in, and you want to make some major changes, let's come call it online.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
As you look at the map, and let's just look at Dr. Hawkins' property.
Okay.
Is his in the orange R2 right there, right past, because the corner, you got the freeway in the corner, so that must be Hawkins Street?
Let me tell you one thing, one thing about this map is different from this map. And what I'm trying to do is...
No, hold, stay with me, stay with me.
Okay.
We're trying to get specifics.
I know.
Tell me where Dr. Hawkins' property is, based on either map, I'll take either one.
It's very hard to find it on either one of these, but that's the way the map is done. Okay, this is the freeway.
Yes.
This is the Sandra Bland, University Drive, going to campus. Right, right in here, there's a...
Hawkins Street?
There's a street, yeah, Hawkins Street.
All right.
But you see, all of this is kind of blanked out.
But, but that's good. But what I'm saying is, based on the map, as you just delineated to us,
Okay.
Dr. Hawkins' property is already zoned for what he was trying to put.
It could be R2 or GC, but part of the process is that, irregardless of whether it is zoned GC already, he still has to put in the application, denouncing that he's going to use, that's what he's going to do with it, if he's currently, if it's currently zoned, something different.
Oh, if it's zoned something different, yes.
Right, because, because again, our maps don't, we don't have, so if you go on Hempstead, and I'll just say example, we have a general map, Hempstead has a general map, but Hempstead's map has street to street.
That's all I was saying.
And so, I know my property's street, what do I fall into? And I thought that's what planning and zoning and our new thing is supposed to include, because we wouldn't have this conversation, so we would be able to say Hawkins Street on the tip of this, in the corner of this, is in this, but on part of the backside of this property may be in another, it may be ag. So is that part of...
The new con...
The new plan? Because we, we don't want to just put out the same, because that's for everyone's information. That map is older, this is newer. See if y'all can see the difference, because the overlay, then you'll see some red, which is CC, which is not, which is... This was our future...
There's no CC.
There is no CC, but on here, it's CC. And CC was our futuristic pieces of like, so CC was with, if they, this came out and you bought and just had a row of like mixed-use development going all the way down, commercial, like, again, your Sixth Street. Future thinking on how to protect ourselves and making sure we're right. That map is older, and so most people, depending upon what they're trying to do, they look at one of the two maps, and we haven't had, and again, none of the maps have a street by street, because again, why? Which is not a bad thing or a good thing, we just hope that we would update it. I would say that each time we've had someone come before us, which is the part that we've got to pay attention to, because the mayor talked about it, each time someone comes before us, we get the legal description, and we have what the legal description is, and it denotes if it's R1 or R3. So we, we, we change it that way, but we don't have like an overall map where someone can kind of look at it on their own.
And is that the map that the gentleman spoke of, Counselor, doing?
Yes, and we've talked about, because, because only a few streets are denoted, and so it's real hard to find a piece of property, because you'd be like, well, here's, Sharon Street's delineated, but maybe no other street.
So what's, what's his status for the rest of us? The last conversation was, he's doing this, does he need something from us? Where specifically is that situation? Because we've heard that at least a month or more.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you all would hire him to do this, since he's got some time off from the university.
Okay, so, let's, let's stay, no, no, let's stay there. What does it take to hire him to do it? See, we need that, that's, we need those specifics, because we want it done. And if he's got that capability, you know, he should be paid for his work, but we need an invoice and saying... But we need an invoice and saying what he's gonna do, so we can look at the invoice and say, okay, well, we need you to make sure the streets are gonna be here. Or, or something that we want included, so he can do it and we can pay him, and we'll have it done.
The, the better proposal for you to look at.
Okay, and, and you mentioned something earlier about paying for something out of your pocket. What was that? What is that?
The problem is, uh, he's not at the university this summer, and the university has been allowing him to print up whatever we need. And I would go in and get permission for him to do it, but right now, that's kinda up in the air. And, uh, so he doesn't have his office or the keys to the printing room. And so, he'd rather not mix.
No, we, but see, if.
And so, I'm paying for him to go to Kinko's, and.
We, we want those bills.
Okay.
Because, you know, you guys are, are doing the work, and the city should be paying for that. So, out of fairness, we do wanna pay you for what you're paying him. But see, also, that way, uh, we can put him on it to do it, get it done.
Okay, and he can keep doing it every time he needs something.
Sure, yes, Councilman.
Dr. Brown, have you already paid for him to go to Kinko's to do it?
Uh, not yet. I gave him the maps last week, because I was gonna try to get him ready for the day. And then when they said the date was Friday, I, I told him, um, uh, put it really sitting up all night, trying to get it down and take it. And then, and then he said that, uh, and, and so, right now, he's at a stage where he's putting all this on the computer.
All right, so, could me and Exante get your personal, uh, contact information? Because, I mean, at one point in time, we did have great roles at our university, and so, they'll be willing to allow us to.
Okay, 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 well, it's the dean of architecture. Now, she's not telling them, but, but I mean, that's routine for the faculty members. If they're not teaching for the summer, in other words, he's the new faculty member.
He's saying they're gonna ta, they're gonna take care of Hempstead?
Okay, okay, well, then, so we'll bring the receipts.
So, we know the work to be done.
But, but he's saying he can maybe get permission from the university to let him do that for the university.
Yeah, to get it printed, but we still need the work, so he still needs to give us the proper process. Now, now, I guess so we can codify like what we're doing, 'cause I'm.
I think, I think I can, I think I know what the question is, okay. So, let me try to ask.
Okay.
And I, and I think you touched on it. This map, that's some differences. And, and I don't know who did this, but it seems like somebody was trying to update the idea of a commercial all the way down University Drive and those types.
So, so you're saying the overlay didn't go through planning and zoning? Is that what the mayor, you said you didn't know who did it?
Parts of this we worked on, and it's just, it was back then, you recall us doing this? Okay, the, uh, so, let me tell you like this, and, uh, Dr. Roland probably knows all the parts. We had a person that was in the Houston Planning Department. He was one of our graduates in architecture, and he worked in the city for quite a while. Okay, and then after him, they had another student. Now.